I call to order the April 26, 2022 Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. Mr. Went, you've gone over who is absent and who will be filling in. Can you just repeat that for the record, please?
Sure. Regular members, Bremen and Ford are not present this evening, so alternate members Kit and Gordon will be sitting in their stead.
Commissioners Kit and Gordon, are you, have you, are you up to speed on everything with being present or reviewing any tapes if needed?
Yes.
I saw, I saw yes from Attorney, from Commissioner Gordon. So we'll go forward. First item would be minutes. Sorry, I lost my agenda here. So we have too many minutes. Should I call them both, Mr. Went, or just do the one at a time?
That's up to you. It's, you could go either way. The May, the March 22nd minutes were tabled last time because there was some strike through text that wasn't struck through. Yeah, but up to whoever makes the motion.
Okay, so we're doing many meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
Move to approve March 22nd.
Motion to approve March 22nd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kit, seconds. For March 22nd only, any comments, additional comments or edits? Commissioner Francis?
Uh, no, that was the one with some strike throughs corrected.
Commissioner Kent?
It was about the, of the housing.
Yes.
We improved the lot size, increased the lot size.
No comment from me either.
Right. And thank you to our staff for going it over again, just to make sure there were no others.
Right, I did, yes.
Any other comments, or can we put approving to a vote? All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 22nd, please say aye or raise your hands. Commissioner Braun?
I'm here, I'm raising my hand.
I see you perfectly, I guess. So that is unanimous, seven in favor. Moving on to the law, what is it, April 12th minutes, may I have a motion?
Move to approve the April 12th minutes.
Commissioner Francis moves to approve. Do I have a second? Commissioner Harrison, seconds. Commissioner Francis?
Yes, I read, I read them and have no changes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, no comments. They look good. Thank you.
Any other commission members? All those in favor of approving the April 12th minutes, please say aye or raise your hands. Commissioner Braun?
Yep, raising my hand.
Another seven approval unanimous. Moving on to new applications for recommendation to public hearing. 1252 Pequot Avenue subdivision application of Poly Berry and Richard Clarida for two lots in an R3 zone. Mr. Went?
I, I really don't have anything beyond that description, Mr. Chairman. It's a two lot subdivision. There will also be a coastal site plan attached to this that should be noted there. It will be when we get to the public hearing. So I really don't have any further comment until, but it does require a hearing.
May I have a motion? Commissioner Levy, move to public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Francis, as he, as Mr. Went said, required. Any comments?
None.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Commissioner Braun?
Correct, aye.
Thank you. Seven approved, move to public, uh, seven unanimous to move to public hearing. Item B. Zoning Regulation Amendments, application of 15 Unqua Road LLC to amend Section 12.3. The center designed business district to include inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing components. Uh, Mr. Went, should I call C as well?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, these are companion applications that I will summarize briefly.
There, as I said, call, I also, item C, 15 Unqua Road zoning compliance application of 15 Unqua Road LLC. Pertaining to a 63 unit residential development pertaining to Section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes. Mr. Went?
Yeah, once again, the, these two are companion applications. There's a, a text amendment proposal, an item B, item C is a site plan application for 63 unit. A building 15 Unqua Road is a project, is a site that is a through lot between Unqua and Sanford Street. Adjacent to the community theater parcel. There was a development proposal once on this lot that was withdrawn last year. Now they're back with the, this particular proposal. We're anxious to get it, yeah, an early start on this, so we have time to, have plenty of time for public review and comment on this application.
May I have a motion on the item, on the items, excuse me, Commissioner Levy?
Uh, move all three to public hearing.
Two.
Two, but yeah, I know you, we knew your point. Um, may I have a second? Commissioner Francis, seconds. Any additional comments from Commissioner Levy and or Francis? I see you, Commissioner Harrison.
Question to Mr. Went, is this the same size it was a year or two ago? 63 units?
Nope, it's bigger.
So it was four stories with parking underneath, is that what it is?
Yeah, was, this is five and a half, essentially six stories with parking under. And underground.
And. So that's higher than our. Regulations?
Yes.
But they can do that because it's inclusionary?
That is their proposal, correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Uh, I lost connection to the network for a moment, so I missed the last few comments, so.
Just asking about the application in general. Um, do you have any comments, or can I go to Commissioner Harrison?
No, no comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. I look forward to the public hearing. I just want to make sure, have the neighbors been apprised of the development in this application or the reapplication of this?
The two, um, we have already posted the materials to our website, and I know the two adjacent neighbors have both been notified thus far. But there'll be greater outreach as we approach the public hearing date, but the, the adjacent commercial neighbors have been notified.
Thank you.
Is this an 8-30G or?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Companion regulation, a companion regulation amendment as well.
Okay.
Any other commissioners, or can we put to a vote? All those in favor of moving both items to a public hearing, please say aye or raise your hands. C6, Commissioner Braun?
Yes, my hand is raised.
Uh, seven unanimous moving to public hearing. Moving on to old business. 1609 Fairfield Beach Road, special exception in coastal site plan application of Gregory Sargent pertaining to the demolition. And reconstruction of a single family dwelling. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the sub, the subject parcel has a single family dwelling on it that dates back to 1899, excuse me. As well as a detached garage with an apartment above, which was built and refurbished in 2010. The applicant seeks a special exception in coastal site plan to demolish the single family dwelling and rebuild it to the current FEMA standards. The applicant originally received approval from the zoning board of appeals in 2019 for this proposal. For variance for the number of dwellings on the lot. The variance was overturned on an appeal. Since Section 11.4 of our regulations provide for a special exception application for properties that contain more than one dwelling unit. The court found that the variance application was not the proper venue for this application, but rather. It should go to this commission as a special exception application, so therefore, this application has been made to you. Uh, the plans have been referred to the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. Their comments find that the proposed project is consistent with coastal management policies. Uh, the staff recommends conditional approval, uh, and we recommend the following conditions, that, uh, number one, native plantings be installed and maintained in accordance with the coastal planting plan. Number two, construction be in compliance with Section 32 of our regulations, which is the flood protection section. Number three, stormwater detention system be installed as shown on the plans. Number four, uh, that the soil erosion and sedimentation controls be installed and maintained during the entire construction period. Uh, number five, no additional patio or pavement areas permitted waterward of the proposed porch. And lastly, that the setback from Long Island Sound for the new dwelling can be no closer than the existing closest point of the existing dwelling pursuant to Section 11.12. We heard from Attorney Green on behalf of the neighbors at 1623 Fairfield Beach Road. He argues that the lot width and therefore the side yard setback are not accurately calculated. He argues that the interpretation of Section 11.12 with regard to setback to Long Island Sound was not measured correctly. Also, uh, submitted, uh, written testimony from a real estate appraiser opining that any reduction in the current view of the neighbor. Would have a negative effect on the value of, of that neighbor's property. Since this is a special exception application, the standards of review for Section 27.4 apply. Number one, is the location type, character, size, and use of buildings in harmony with and conform to. The appropriate and ordinary development of the town and neighborhood and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property or impair its value. Two is the nature and location of the use of buildings and structures such that such there is adequate access for park protection. Three are the streets serving the proposed use. Adequate to care perspective traffic with provisions made for entering and, uh, entering the property without creating undue traffic congestion. And four is the proposed use and compliance with the. Plan of conservation and development. That is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, subject and questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Uh, may I have a motion on the item, Commissioner Braun?
Um, I would like to make a motion to deny this item for a variety of reasons.
Okay, there's a motion to deny on the table. Do I have a second?
Can I give my reasons now to see if we can get a second?
Commissioner Harrison? Is that a second? Okay, sorry. So I have a second from Commissioner Harrison. Uh, Commissioner Braun?
Okay, so I was, as you can see, I'm in my car, but from memory, I read through, um, the exhibits a few times and, um. I was convinced that number one, the setbacks are inadequate. Because the width of the property is wider when you take the average width in light of, um, the complicated sort of, um, calculation you have to do. Um, and also by putting it, it seemed as though it was likely, although this isn't really a factor in my consideration, but it seemed likely that. The main purpose of this was to allow the back unit from the garage unit to have a view of the ocean as opposed to any other reason. And it seemed as though there's a better way of, of approaching that, which would be not to move it all the way to the other side of the property, but to, to observe at least some of the setback that would be required. Um, you know, uh, by moving it all the way to the other side of the property, it diminishes the other property's property value by, um, impairing its view of the ocean. Um, so I was, I was, um, struck by some of the exhibits. And, um, based on that, I would either deny it, or I would perhaps off, um. Recommend a compromise where move halfway the distance instead of the whole distance to the other side of the, um. Of the property and allow, you know, half the setback that would normally be required instead of, uh, the full setback. But not move it to within just a couple feet of the boundary. So I'm taking, I guess, number one of the special exception, um, criteria, which is it's likely to impair the property value of the next door property. Especially, and in light of the fact that, um, when you look at the average width. Um, it bumps it into the higher level of setback being needed. So that's, that's my reasoning for that. But I would entertain moving it, not denying it altogether, but allowing it to be constructed, but having perhaps half of the setback that's normally required. And Mr. Went can perhaps tell us what those setbacks are. I think if it's over 50 feet average width, it goes up to a higher setback, uh, five versus 10 feet or something like that?
The, at. Less than 50 feet, the required setback is five feet. That's what they are proposing.
Okay.
If it above, if it goes at 50 and above. It would be an additional foot, it would be six feet. So.
I thought it was 10 or 12 feet if it went over 50.
No, there's a sum of setbacks, but no closer than six feet on any side. They're proposing 12.2. On one side in five on the other. So, um.
So if you shifted it three or four feet back towards the middle from where they want it, would that be sort of like a 50/50 compromise type thing?
Well, as I understand your, and, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to interpret your. Your motion was that you're, um. You're concerned of the impairment of the property value of the neighbor, so you want to create your setback than the minimum from that westerly side.
Then the minimum if it was under 50.
Right.
But I believe it's over 50. But we probably have discretion to. Pick something in the middle. I'm taking what the neighbor's attorney mentioned. Who can go full on with either interpretation. It seems like it's a very close call as to what that width of the property is. So my motion is to deny, but I would like to explore the possibility of moving it. Not either all in one direction or all in the other direction, but halfway.
Commissioner, can I move to Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Braun, are you done? I don't want to cut you off. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, thank you for the opportunity. I don't have anything more to add than what Commissioner Braun just articulated, so, uh, would love to have, you know, more of a discussion on this.
I have some comments, but do any other commissioners wish to be heard? Or do you mind if I jump in? Okay, um. So I, I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Braun. Our own staff and it, the surveyor from the applicant has provided us with the idea that the, the average width is within 50 feet. Um, they use, the staff uses an interpretation, um, that it has used throughout. The past few years with issues like that, this arise throughout properties on Fairfield Beach Road. Uh, this, the neighbor themselves had their own setbacks analyzed by the interpretation proffered by our staff. Um, I was not persuaded by Attorney Green's arguments. Which appeared to center on the idea that, and I'll let Mr. Went help me because as everything, everybody acknowledges, this is hyper technical. Um, that the roadway somehow affects the, uh, measurements. And staff has, staff has reviewed, has used this interpretation, has testified that it's not accurate. Uh, to interpret it the way that Attorney Green has. Uh, I have, and I'll, I'll ask Mr. Went to kind of go through it, but when I reviewed the regulations. After hearing from Mr. Attorney Green and from Mr. Went, I did side with Attorney, uh, Mr. Went. Um. I thought it was clear that Attorney, Mr. Went's interpretation was the more accurate interpretation. And even if there was some ambiguity or something along those lines. We, the staff in particular, but I, zoning department in general has utilized their interpretation. For years now for other application, for other, well, throughout the beach for other applications. And to now go back on that, I think is particularly unfair. Um, to this applicant. And I'll be the, and I think I'd be the, one of the first to jump to, to Mr. Went and say, no, your interpretation is wrong if I truly felt that to be the case. Um, but Mr. Went, if you can please go through what I understand to be Mr. Green's, Attorney Green's point with the roadway. Uh, are you able, is that, is that something you're able to do, please?
Yeah, I, I can, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I do respectfully disagree with Attorney Green's interpretation. The, the, if you look at the grid, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but the lot. He, he's correct in that the, the area of the road gets netted out of the lot area, which, which they have done. Um, again, it's the same surveyor that did both the neighbors' lots, so they did net out the area of the road. His argument was that the, the narrower portion of the creek side of the lot should not factor into the, the width calculation, and if you exclude that. Narrower strip, uh, it does increase the average width. Well, of course, if you exclude a narrow, a portion of a narrow property, it's going to increase the average. But I disagree, but that's the way that it should be calculated. So we agree with the, uh, the survey and its interpretation of width. So from, from the staff perspective, we believe it to be compliant. Um, but, um, again, that's. It, it goes back to the more subjective issue that was raised with respect to impairment of value. While I disagree.
Yeah, let me, I'll dive into that, Mr. Went.
So, so I, I do disagree, uh, so I'll leave that alone, but, but I, I do respectfully disagree with the interpretation. That was proffered by Attorney Green. I think the applicant did net out, the surveyor did net out the area of the road, this is proper, but I think the lot width calculation was done correctly.
Commissioner Braun, let me finish, please. Um, but you will have your chance. Um. So. Jumping off of what Mr. Went said, um, the lot is considered in its, in its entirety. And Mr. Attorney Green has lopped off a narrow proportion of the lots inappropriately. And I don't believe that his rationale makes any legal sense. It's one entire lot. Um, it's just, I understand how it's calculated and how it should be calculated. The other problem I think Attorney Green and the neighbors have is they presented no, while they presented legal arguments and they provided facts. At least to the best that they could, they did not provide expert as to surveyors. They did provide the, Mr. Trinkus, who is a civil engineer. And I think I asked him point blank, what are you here for? And it was not here to proffer expert opinions on being a surveyor. He, and I think it's fair for him to read maps. He is an elect, he's a civil engineer. I think that's something that. Well, I don't know if a court would necessarily allow it, but it came in, came in as factual testimony. But as to the correct standards for that surveyor's need to provide, I do, I do not and cannot. See him as an expert witness to opine about what the proper setbacks and how they are calculated would be. We do have a survey provided by a surveyor who gives us the definitive answer that it's less than 50 feet. We have our own staff. Who provides an interpretation that is used throughout this beach district. Who, uh, is supporting of the surveyor, and as Mr. Went said, the difference between Mr. Green's argument and, uh. Mr. Went's argument is simply the road and lopping off one, a portion of the lot, which I think is inappropriate. So I don't believe there's sufficient evidence in the record to establish that. The width of the lot is anything different than what the surveyor provided. Uh, again, particularly because of the difference in opinion between Mr. Mr. Went and Attorney Green. Um. As to. The other, let's go back to the, the other, what's the word, um. Criteria for special exception. I think it's, let's go backwards. Is it proposed use in compliance with the plan conservation development? I think that's pretty clear that it is. It's residential use. It was residential use. It's saying the same use. Uh, and that's, uh, use that's in compliance with that area. Uh, the third is traffic. Again, or undue hazard to traffic. I don't think that's an issue, not affecting that. The nature and location, uh, there's adequate fire protection. I don't think there's any issue there. Nothing's been brought up that there's inadequate access for fire protection. I would, it's being used as it previously was, uh, and there seems to be no issue. The only issue as to Attorney Green's characterization of soft. Criteria for the special exception application is the impairment of value. So when I questioned, we do have a letter from a. Real estate appraiser. And I asked Mr. Attorney Green, excuse me, I, I practice in New York, so they don't use attorney designations for attorneys down there. And when I say attorney, so and so in New York, it's used against me. I have to fight back to. Regain my New York attorney credentials. So I, I have trouble going back and forth. I apologize. But Attorney Green, when I asked him, did this appraiser note or make any determinations about. The propriety of setbacks, he said, no, it was just the simple, it's closer to my property. So therefore it impairs the value. Well, that's great, except I think if you go by the six foot setback, it's going to be closer to their property anyways. And to be frank, so what? If it's within the proper setback. If it pairs the property, it is what it is. The prop, the, the applicant has a right to use the property in the compliance with the regulations that we have. On the contrary, as I brought up, uh, from Attorney Green was, well, the contrapositive seems to be true too. If it's going closer to you, the neighbor's property and in decreasing their value potentially. It's moving away from the other neighbor and increasing their value. So does that not net out? Who knows? But I don't think that the impairment of an adjacent property is meant to be used in this way. It's first off, as I said. Just simply the act of moving closer to a property may, while it may impair value. Does not seem to be persuasive or even meet the burden here if the applicant is using the property. Within the regulations that we purport, which I believe he, he is. It strikes me that this is, the impairment of adjacent values is more that it's insistent with the adjacent values, not. Increasing one property and decreasing the other to potentially figure out, well, is there a net offset or whatever it is? It's, well, this, Mr. Sergeant wants to put an industrial complex there and it's going to affect everybody's property. That's what I understand decrease in property values to be, not. Affecting one residential property and then in one way, helping the other in another way. It just doesn't seem that that makes any sense to me. Um, and the fact that he's using it within the confines of our regulations. I, I don't know how that can be, while it may hinder property, I don't know how that can be used against Mr. Sergeant. He's using it within the confines of our regulations. Um. Well, I think that's kind of everything I had. I, I mean, in some, I accept the setback. Uh, calculations proffered by the surveyor, the expert, the only expert. That was provided in this case, aside from our staff, excuse me. We have our staff, we have surveyor. Who was telling us that these are the proper setbacks and giving us proper evidence for us to base it on. These interpretations have been used throughout the district. Uh, I think we, it would behoove us to follow that. For the sense of fairness, fair play, justice, or anything you want to put in there, simple consistency. And as far as property values, as I, I'll stand on what I said. So. I would move to approve with the conditions stated by staff. Commissioner Braun, I said it was, you'd have a chance to rebut, and then Commissioner Levy?
Um, not so much rebut, but to clarify, so.
Sorry.
That's how they do it in New York. Yeah, so my recollection is, um, the surveyor didn't give an opinion on the proper setback, but he gave an opinion on the width of the property, but the, there was no calculation shown and the, some of the numbers were old. And I believe an engineer could probably do the same thing, and the engineer did do that. Um, and, and explained his work. Explained how he did the calculation of what the width of the property was, and the width of the property is what determines what the setback is. But I have a question for Mr. Went. So when you add up the setbacks on both sides, the proposed setback is 12 feet on one side and five feet on the other side? For a total of 17 feet? Is that what's being proposed?
That's correct.
So if we were to use our discretion and sort of split it down the middle, we would take 17 feet divided by two and call it eight and a half on either side. Is there anything wrong with us doing that if we chose to?
Anything wrong with it? If, if, it would be, if, if, if your question is, would it be in compliance with the regulations? The answer would be yes.
So, okay, so that's what I would think about, that's what I would like to do. And then I had another comment about property values. I think the appraiser indicated that losing a view of the ocean does affect property value. It's not just having something built there. And if you move something from one side of the property to just a few feet from the other side, and then there was a whole other issue of moving forward a little bit as well. And it did affect the view. There were, there were schematics and renderings that showed that the view was affected. So I do believe that is a valid consideration for us. And based on that, I would like to modify my motion to, instead of denying it, approve it with the condition that the setback be equal on both sides.
Well, but it's over on one side. I don't know if, I think, well, much for how that works.
He wants to move it to the other side. Why don't we put it in the middle?
May I address that?
Yeah, let's, um, Commissioner Braun, I understand you've asked to change your motion. Can we, you want to do that or can we keep it for now with what you're, knowing your request? And just let everybody say their piece?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about this idea that we have discretion to move buildings right and left. Um, we have setback regulations which set the minimum on either side. Uh, I agree with the staff's analysis that the five-foot setback does meet the appropriate requirements. You know, if we were to move this, uh, you know, uh, seven feet, uh, my guess is he'd have to go back before, you know, coastal site plan review and back to Connecticut DEP. Uh, and I don't know that for a fact, but my guess is that moving it substantially. It's also my recollection that the, uh, one of the reasons for placing the building where it is had to do with the, uh, cot, the existing cottage being on the easterly boundary and therefore moving it further to the west so as to permit access by the driveway and to the garage. In terms of, as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, uh, it's not for us, I don't know that we have discretion to relocate buildings, uh, either we approve it or deny it, uh, where it is, uh, would be my thoughts. Uh, rather than getting into the design, you know, the, uh, uh, design professional architectural realm that's outside my scope. And I'm, you know, it's not for us to move the building. Uh, in terms of the impairment of value, again, anytime you put a building closer, whether it be in this zone or any zone with a view or not, whenever it's at the minimum setback, it means there's a neighbor that's going to be unhappy. Uh, whether it be here or anywhere else, uh, you know, throughout the beast, beach district, it's generally five feet. And that's, uh, those are the existing regulations. If, uh, and I think in just about every situation, uh, when you put a building, uh, right on the setback line, it's going to impact the adjacent neighbor. Uh, and that should not be, I would hate to set the precedent uh, that anytime somebody complies with our regulation, that the, the neighbor can come in and say, well, you're reducing my property value. Uh, and therefore you can't do it and get a special exception. Uh, that's a horrible precedent, I think, to set, uh, particularly for people who are trying to abide by the regulations. Um, I think the impairment of value goes more to the idea where there's something unique about the use or the structure that's putting in there. Um, something in the nature that might be considered, not necessarily a nuisance, but something that would certainly detract from the neighborhood. You know, if somebody wanted to put a landfill here, uh, that would be a big problem, um, you know, or some other use totally out and that would impair the value. So to my mind, uh, I'd be very reluctant to, uh, move it. And certainly even, even if it were a si- six-foot setback, which I don't think it is, uh, that would not, uh, change the, the impairment of value, uh, claim, which again is a generic as opposed to a specific loss. So based upon that, I would, um, I would deny the, I would vote against the existing motion and then instead move to approve.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard? I will go back, then I'll, if not, I'll go back to Commissioner Braun as to what she wants to do with her motion.
I would like to modify my motion to make it eight feet on either side instead of five feet and 17 feet.
Well, uh, let's, you, you made that request. Commissioner Harrison, you seconded the initial motion. Is that, do you accept that modification?
Uh, yes, I accept it.
My only, I, I echo Commissioner Levy's concern. I'm not sure that we do have this discretion. As he said, we have minimum setbacks. And even if we go by Attorney Green's arguments, I believe the minimum setback on that side is six feet. So I'm not sure we can make this, in, we can make this imposition. I guess your thought is maybe we need to in order to avoid the uh, reduction of value, uh, but I don't share that thought that we have this discretion. These are those hard reg, hard regulations, quantifiable regulations that residents are entitled to utilize. And maybe except for the rarest circumstances that I can't even think of, public safety always jumps to mind, I guess, is the catch-all. I don't agree that we have that discretion to utilize in this case. I mean, I'll note just in, uh, what you said earlier, Commissioner Braun, about the, uh, the surveyor didn't provide the setback measurements. It's like, well, yes, he did. He gave what the average width was, which is what even you acknowledged is the basis for what the setback is. And I'll repeat what I said about, uh, Mr. Trinkus. While he can read the survey, I don't believe he is, and maybe probably do the calculations, I'll grant you that. I don't believe he is a proper expert witness to testify what's the average width of this, of the lot is. And I think we set ourselves up for what could be a very easy appeal, that there was no evidence, no proper evidence put before us other than the surveyor and our staff as to, well, surveyor really, uh, from the applicant, as to what the proper average width is going to be. Unfortunately, I am guessing that this is regardless of our decision, it's destined to go on appeal anyways. Uh, nothing more needs to be said on that, but we are, we are here to apply this application and our regulations as best we can regardless. And I stick by what I said. I think the, the setback has been provided to us by the average width by the surveyor, uh, the interpretation from our staff. And the surveyor should be our guiding north star, so to speak. Um, and to me, I would move, as I said, uh, I would vote against this current motion and bring and re, and encourage, as I can't do it as the chair, a motion to approve with conditions stated by staff. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Oh, Commissioner Harrison, sorry.
Sorry, just a point of order. Do we have to vote to deny Commissioner Braun's motion or? I'm just, I just want to.
No, I intend to go through that in a second.
Okay, sorry.
I want to see if any commissioner has any other. Commissioner Gordon.
I just want to say that I agree with what you said, and I, I think that, um, if, if we were to, like, I love the idea of trying to make everyone happy, but if we were to approve it with such a strong, um, directive, then it, that, we can still, like you said, appeal it and say, but there are other things within the regulations. So that would be my concern of that. So that's why I agree with that, what you're saying.
Uh, just to be, uh, Commissioner Gordon, agree with me or someone else?
Yes, with you. I'm sorry, but with you.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Kent.
I agree with you as well, uh, Commissioner Noonan. The applicant is well within the, um, guidelines set by this commission, well within the regulations. So I don't see where we have the discretion to dictate the exact sighting of his house within those parameters. So I would, uh, agree with you to, um, approve it with the conditions set forth by staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun.
So I guess I'm not, I'm, I'm not expressing myself clearly enough. I don't mean to dictate or move houses around. I'm saying tell them what the setback will be on the other side that they're moving towards. Instead of making it five feet, make it eight feet.
No, I understand that, but I think, and Mr. Went, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is if we go with what Attorney Green is proposing, it to be over 50 feet. It's only over 50 feet by point something or 51 feet or maybe 53 feet. I don't remember it offhand. What would the setback be for? Uh, if we use Attorney Green's and the neighbor's analysis? We lost him. Oh, there he is.
Uh, if you're predicating the movement of the setback based on average lot width, presuming that the, the lot is 50 feet in width rather than less than 50 feet, it would move that from five feet to six feet.
Regardless if it's, the average width is 51 or 55 or 60.
Well, if it's greater than 50 feet, the average i- is the, the combined side setback, adding the two sides together has to be at least a third of the lot width, but no less than six feet on any one side.
No less than six feet. Okay, so it could be, it could be six feet on one side and it would have to be what on the rest? Well, that would depend on what the lot, average lot is.
Yeah, there was the, 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 if presuming a 50-foot lot width is, a third of that is, is seven, about 17 feet. So it's, they, they comply. They'd have to slide it over one, one foot. Uh, but again, that's, that's the motion, as I understand it, is to equalize the setbacks at 8.6 feet on each side, rather than 5.2 and 12.2, or five and 12.2.
And that's where we're coming from, Commissioner Braun, as far as, well, at least I interpreted as moving the building is, he's entitled to offset it off the property line, uh, off the center of the property to some extent. And to require the equalization, I think, is where we're having issues. I mean, I still believe it's five feet. That's just me.
I guess that's a problem because the numbers were old and then they revise the numbers. And I, I just, the calculation was not shown of how they got to the 50 feet average, whereas the calculation was shown on the engineer's, um, information that we got.
Well, we got a new surveyor, new survey from Mr. Sergeant in, during the application, so we have new data. And it's average width size is the average width size of the, I mean, it's, do I know exactly how it was done? No. And I know Mr. Trinkus, uh, testified as to what he would do. But we do have a surveyor who gave us what the average width of the lot size was. He was a licensed surveyor. Um, and while it was not given to us as to how it was done, either by him, because it was just a survey, or by Mr. Sergeant, a pro se applicant, you know, it still was given to us. And I don't know if Mr. Trinkus's calculation was the proper standard for a surveyor. And nor can we say that it was. He was not a, he is not a surveyor. He can read a map. He can tell me, I mean, we all know what an average width lot is. It's, you know, you can go line by line, you know, inch by inch, foot by foot, all the way down and what the average is. And I'm not sure what the standard in the industry is. I mean, I know what average width of a lot is, just mathematically what it's telling me it is. And that's my, where I'm kind of putting the flag down, at least on my position, is we have a licensed surveyor who's telling us what it is. And while he may not be telling us how he got there, I'm not sure that's required. And, you know, as it was a pro se applicant, you know, I'm not sure that even, even an attorney applicant would have thought that was needed to be provided. And I don't think we can really go off of what Mr. Trinkus said. He is not a licensed surveyor, and he may know what the industry standard is. He may very well. I don't know that, though. I challenged him on that, and I challenged Attorney Green, why, what is he being proffered as? And he's, it was told he was a fact witness only. So I don't believe he can be provide, he can give evident, competent evidence, and I don't mean that meaningly, I'm just being technical. Competent evidence as to the, how average width lot is provided, especially when he's not considering the narrower strip below, which I believe is inaccurate to begin with. So he was using that. And that was, I think, inappropriate. So, you know, that's the main difference between the applicant and the neighbor. Commissioner Francis.
Yeah, I, if I recall, the, the lot width was slightly under 50, 49 something, or slightly over 50. But the licensed surveyor said slightly under 50, as you said.
In both applicants, I mean, the three-year-old survey and the current survey. So, I mean, yeah.
50. So it seems like we have to go with that with the five-foot setbacks.
It's a bright line rule and, you know, Attorney Green's point is somewhat fair. It's only, you know, hey, it's, uh, you know, half an inch or whatever it is, but bright line rule. I mean, what, I, there's nothing I can do about that. So any other commissioners wish to be heard or? I need to, we should figure out where we are with the app, with the motion and procedure moving forward, but I don't want to cut off any debate or any, excuse me, discussion. So the motion on the table is move to approve with equal setbacks on both sides.
What? Uh, they're just getting through.
Right, right. You're, go on mute, right?
I'm muted, him, no worries.
Thank you. Although we probably should have let him go. I bet it would have been an interesting comment. The motion on the table is move to approve with equal setbacks. Commissioner Braun, can I assume that you would incorporate the staff's conditions of approval as well?
So, could you repeat what you just said? I didn't, the what commission, conditions of approval?
Staff had provided conditions of approval as well, okay.
Their approval, um, tied in with the, um, DEP's.
Yes.
Coastal, yeah, I, yeah, I would go along with that.
I assumed, I assumed you did, I would, but, so the conditions of approval by staff with equal setbacks on either side.
Correct.
So we will, we will decide, we'll make, we'll make, put a vote on that. We, myself included, have expressed another motion to approve. So if we move, if we vote against this current motion, I expect that another motion to approve will be put forth. So we're not, if you deny that, if somebody did not, if somebody votes against it, we're not moving on. We're gonna revisit this. So you could, a mo-, uh, an affirmative vote, obviously is an affirmative vote, a vote to do against the current motion will not end consideration of this application. I suspect another motion will, uh, make, will come down the pike. If it doesn't, then it does. And, but I, I think enough, that we've talked enough where a second motion to approve, if this doesn't survive, if this motion does not go through, we'll come through, okay? Any questions? Everybody understand? My convoluted, less than concise? Okay. All those approving the motion from Commissioner Braun, as I stated, please say aye or raise your hand. Commissioner Braun, all those opposed, please say aye or raise your hand. I count si-, do I count six? Or five? No, six. Okay. Remaining six. Okay. The motion is defeated. Is there, may I have another motion on this item? Commissioner Levy.
Uh, I would move to approve the application with the, uh, conditions, uh, set forth by staff.
May I have a second? Commissioner Francis. Any other comments? I think we've discussed it at length, all the different, well, scenarios and rationales. Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Francis, anything?
Nothing further to add.
Any other commissioner?
No.
Okay. Motion, the current motion is motion to approve with, uh, the application as is with conditions stated by staff. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Commissioners Noonan, Francis, Harrison, Kit, Gordon, and Levy, all those opposed, Commissioner Braun. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you for a good discussion. Well, um, next old business, nine thirty-six, Sasko Hill Road, special exception application of the Country Club of Fairfield pertaining to construction of a new paddle tennis court and warming hut. Mr. Wentz.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. The Country Club of Fairfield seeks to add a fourth paddle tennis court, a new warming hut and associated decking. This project received an inland wetland approval back in January. Uh, this project is not anticipated to have any negative impact on coastal resources. And the relevant special exception considerations are those that you just heard a little while ago. Number one is the type, uh, character, location, size of the buildings is such to harmonize with and conform the orderly development of the town and neighborhood. Two is the nature of the location of buildings such that there's adequate access to fire protection. Three, um, will the, um, proposal result in any undue traffic congestion? And four is the proposed use and compliance with the plan of conservation and development. Uh, it was a very brief overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Braun.
Motion to approve.
May I have a second? Commissioner Francis.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Braun.
Um, yes, and I believe it satisfies all the special exception criteria. I also am always concerned about both inland and tidal, I, I guess it's tidal wetlands, but inland wetlands as well. And I felt that the, um, consultant explained it well, and the footprint of the added construction is either not any additional or very minor in, in relation to what's there already. And it would have, um, no harm. A- as well, there's additional plantings being done to make up for, um, some of the vegetation that's being removed for the expansion. So, uh, based on my own, like, sort of heightened environmental review, I feel like this is appropriate. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis.
Um, I too support it. I think it's a very minimal development of their large site. And the, the new decking will make everything more level, so it will be more accessible for everyone. So I fully support it.
Thank you. Any other commis-, members of the commission? I agree with Commissioner Braun, uh, it meets the criteria, um, and there's adequate, um, environmental protect, explanation, protection, uh, set offs, however, what, however this, you want to characterize it for the particulars. So I'm in favor of the applicant, application as well. Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I see seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Next item for old business is eight fifty-five Stillson Road, subdivision application of eight fifty-five Stillson Road LLC for two lots in an A-zone. Mr. Wentz.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, this proposal entails a division of an existing lot into two parcels. Both proposed parcels are eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-one square feet in size, exceeding the A-zone minimum by approximately twenty-five percent. There will be new, uh, concrete curbing, sidewalk and driveway aprons across the site frontage of this parcel. Uh, the chief concern raised during the hearing was with regard to drainage. Yeah, the engineering department has reported that the applicant has revised their plans in accordance with their recommendations, including dividing the detention system between the front and the back yards and the rear of the site, as well as providing for, um, a berm at the rear to contain drainage on the site. So, uh, our engineering department, uh, the, the applicant did make, uh, some revisions to the plans in accordance with their recommendations, and they are satisfied. Uh, and in our view, it is in compliance with all the relevant standards and considerations. So I will leave it there, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Levy.
I'm to approve.
May I have a second? Commissioner Braun, second. Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, um, they've met all the, uh, requirements set forth by engineering, which is important. So it should take care of any possible drainage problems. Uh, both lots would, uh, after the division would still be conforming and meet our regulations. So based upon that, I think it should be approved.
Commissioner Braun.
Uh, yes, I actually, um, studied the wetlands map and the circle map that was provided by one of the neighbors. And I don't see that the wetlands or regulated area goes onto the site. So I don't think that would be a basis for requiring further wetlands review of the site, um, based on my review of all of that. And as far as the flooding, I'm, I'm, I can only assume that the town engineer and, um, the revision of the plans will prevent flooding from happening. I think the flooding that was happening was on the neighboring property, and perhaps those were not developed properly with proper drainage, you know, years ago. But I'm gonna rely on what our town engineer said and what, um, you know, the recommendations that were followed, um, to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I would, I would approve this.
Thank you. Any other commish-, members of the commission? I agree with both Commissioner Braun and Levy, meets our rec, meets our, uh, regulations, no basis to deny that uh, in those respect. Uh, the neighbors put forth pretty clear evidence of flooding issues, and our town engineer has reviewed and signed off on it. The applicant has done everything it, uh, he or she can do for, uh, with respect to drainage on their property. And, um, I agree, we are in the best interest is to, uh, approve this application in light of, uh, approval from our town engineers. Any other members of the commission? We can put the, uh, motion to a vote, motion is to approve. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. I see seven hands, passes unanimously.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if I may, before we go on to public hearing, I just have a couple of things. Um, firstly, as you and I discussed, um, our next meeting, May the tenth, uh, because there has been no action yet by the state legislature, by, uh, close of business today, we are required, uh, the, the, the allowance to be completely virtual expires at the end of this month. So our May tenth meeting is scheduled to be held in a hybrid fashion, in person, um, at the Fire Training School on one, or I'm sorry, Richard White Way, that's hard to say, Richard White Way, um, down off of Reef Road. Uh, the setup will be that the commission can be in person, and any applicant and member of the public can be in person, but there will also be a WebEx feed and screens available for those members of the public that wish to remain and participate remotely. So, um, that is gonna be our kind of new setup going forward, unless there's any action by the state legislature that warrants further discussion on that. Uh, but we are gonna be in our regular, uh, same meeting date, uh, the tenth, at, at six-thirty down at the Fire Training School. If anybody's not sure where that is, uh, I can certainly help you out with that, uh, in a hybrid fashion. So members of the public will still have the same opportunity to participate as they are participating now remotely. Um, but, um, that's, that's the deal. I will remind everybody of that, and we'll be on the agenda. And just one more thing, uh, maybe a matter perhaps of, of, of personal privilege, but of interest to this commission, uh, in, in light of our, uh, last reference to town engineers, I thought this commission should know that our good friend and colleague Laura Pooley, who has been a town engineer for thirty-six years, is retiring at week's end. Um, and, uh, she's been a great colleague and a great friend, and she's been a valuable asset to this commission. I just thought you should know that this is the last week that we will have her. Uh, we have other folks stepping in to, uh, fill, fill that role. Bill Hurley is still, uh, the engineering manager, is still, uh, available in other staff stepping in. But I know you are well familiar with, uh, Ms. Pooley's, uh, reporting and, uh, resource to this commission, so I thought you should know, uh, that she is leaving town employment at week's end with great sadness for me personally, but with great joy for her, uh, that she can move on to, uh, to pursue other interests. So I just thought that would be a matter of the commission's interest, and I thank you for that indulgence, Mr. Chairman. And one more reminder that, uh, the ninety-two Center Street application, uh, has been postponed, so that will not be going forward this evening.
Thank you. Uh, our, I think I obviously speak for the whole commission. Laura Pooley's been awesome, uh, valued member of Fairfield. We will miss her dearly. Uh, but we look forward also to working closely with Bill Hurley as well. They've both been, the whole engineering department has been great and gracious to us. Um, but Laura Pooley especially has done an exceptional valuable service to our town. So, uh, sorry to see her go, as you said, Mr. Wentz. If there is any type, if there is any type of, uh, celebration or party or anything like that, please let us know, so we can, we have the opportunity to thank her in person, that would be great.
Well, you are welcome to join us at the Gaelic Club, uh, after work on Thursday of this week.
Oh, there you go. Um, and you mentioned the, uh, our, um, we will be in, uh, in person, uh, May tenth. Um, we will wait to see if the app, if the, uh, state legislator does in fact take action on that remote. But due to timing and notice, we have to meet in person, May tenth. If they do extend, then we can have another conversation, but plan on May tenth, uh, in person definitively per state law at this point. Um, thank you, Mr. Wentz. Now to public hearing, you said ninety-two Center Street has been postponed, so we will go to three twenty-one, three twenty-five Reef Road, special permit and coastal site plan application of Phoenix at Reef Road Corp pertaining to additions and alterations to an existing building to convert to residential use in the neighborhood design business district. Attorney Rizzio? You're on mute.
Okay. Uh, Chair members of the commission, I hope, uh, I hope you can hear me this time.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry for that lapse before. Once again, Chair members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. Attorney, uh, representing my client, if you, who's the owner of property, of contract purchased property at three twenty-one, three twenty-five Reef Road. It's Phoenix at Reef Road Court, um, who, uh, would, who plans to come in and take this older non-conforming office building and turn it into nine, uh, very success, very attractive, uh, townhomes. Um, my client, it's interesting, because, you know, as, as you're practicing law and doing zoning in this town these days, it's very interesting to have a client walk in and say, I want to do a low-density, high-end project. And, uh, that's what we have before you. Um, we've taken this project to the Z B A originally, we've received all our approvals. We've received our approvals from the W P C A. Um, what I'd like to do is if Chris Russo can take control of the, of the, um, of the, uh, of the, of the pages, we'll, we'll be able to walk you through this. And I think you'll, you'll be very happy. Chris, if we can start, why don't we start with the, um, the, the site plan as it stands today? Okay, so this project, this property's three twenty-one, three twenty-five, um, Reef Road, uh, directly to the south, you know, there's a vacant lot, there's an office building to the left. These, there are multiple office buildings built here, they, everything's kind of stalled, nothing's been done. I think it's the phone company next door. And that's basically up to the, to the north, and it's really just a, a brick building that's all asphalt, uh, behind it. The same thing goes for our existing building. As you can see, the, the existing building's in dark purple. You can see the amount of parking, and there's about, there's about sixty parking spaces, and we only had about three and a half percent of the property was pervious. The property was not, not FEMA compliant. The property has, has no landscaping in front, it has non-conforming parking in the front, that is a hazardous situation with back, with cars having to back across the sidewalk to get out. There's also an easement that runs along the south side of the property that's shared with the, uh, vacant parcel across the street. And I'll get it, as we get into our proposal, we'll talk about it. So we, we originally had to go to the, um, Z B A for four variances. This is in a neighborhood design district. And in a neighborhood design district, you're required to have, uh, first floor commercial, second floor, second and third floors residential. Um, you also can have, um, you can't have a hundred percent of the building to be, um, be residential. Additionally, we needed a height variance, and the height variance was really to go from thirty to thirty-eight feet, which was necessitated by the FEMA compliance, um, and that, and that the elevations had to come up. And as you can see, it's very attractive and consistent with the homes that are surrounding. In fact, the home, some of the homes to the rear, which are in the residential zones, are actually taller than this, are actually taller than this building. Um, so in designing this, the, our client likes to ta-, is gonna take the existing building and put six units in there, and add an additional three townhomes off the back. Each of the, each of the units will have two-car garage. On circulation will be, and you enter, you'll enter from the north side, and s-, basically, there'll be parking garages along the north, north elevation of the property. And then you'll circle the property and leave through the south side. It's one-way traffic. And then there'll be ten parking spaces out back. Originally, we had planned for fourteen. Um, the Z B A actually said, you know what, we really don't, you, since you don't need that additional parking, we'd rather see a larger buffer between the, um, the neighbors in the back. Um, since I live in the neighborhood, I'm a block away. I personally canvassed the entire, the entire neighborhood. Most importantly, and you'll, we'll have Chris show you a petition, the Petersons who are directly behind us. Um, I sat with Mr. Peterson, he was very excited, happy to see that this was not a high-density project. Happy to see that the, he'd have a nice, um, landscape buffer. As you can see, there's a dotted line along the rear of our property. It's only about a five or six feet from our property, from the pavement to Mr. Peterson's fence. Um, and then there's two other, there's two other neighbors. Uh, Mr. Meyer to the north, and, and Mr. Mrs. Traput to the lo-, to the south, and I, I basically spent the time and talked with them also. Also talked to the neighbors across the street, across the street. It's consistent with this multifamily use. There's number multifamily residences along Reef Road in this location. So, Chris, now let's go back to the first page, give the commission an idea of what we're gonna be looking at. Keep in mind, one of the, one of the reasons I think we were successful getting the variance, because the, the lot is very unique in size. It's almost a hundred by 400 and it's, it, it does not condone itself to first floor retail. The building really has never worked, it's probably eighty, sixty percent empty, mostly short term leases. There used to be, it used to be a medical building there, which would certainly create a lot more traffic than these nine townhouses. So as what you can see is we're going to basically take the, the pervious on the property, you can see the landscaping buffer in the back. We're going to add basically pervious, some pervious pavement in the parking area. And with all the landscaping, we're going up to from three and a half or 3.7% to over 26% of pervious. See if you can see this right here. There's based, the upper part picture is what the, what, what the impervious areas right now. The lower picture is what we're going to be providing. And as you can see, we had over 26% of the property will become a pervy, will be landscaped or pervious materials. Chris, if we can go back to the next page, back to the page. One of the other things we talked about, and if you look at the elevations, you can see the building as it exists, you see the amount of pavement on the two, on the two, on the building to the north. This is an excellent transition, a neighborhood design district typically is a transition zone. We believe that this is an excellent use, it's a multifamily use, but it also softens this area coming down Black Rock, coming down Reef Road where you see you have to the south. There's a vacant lot that used to be an office building and then you have probably one of the uglier office buildings in town, south of that. And to the north is a, a brick building, it basically no windows, it really looks like a utility building. And across the street, you have single family and multifamilies. So what we decided to do, and if you can look, we wanted to make sure you're seeing a side angle elevation there. But when we show you the, the front elevation, we, we have the building set up from the front so that it'll look like the main entryway is to the, is to the front. We did not want to have a long. Let's see, so the building, as you can see, from the, will have the, the appearance of being what you, what you would see in the beach area of these nice big, larger, single family homes. It's going to have an entrance and an entryway into that unit directly off a sidewalk. There's currently, we'll be adding new sidewalks, we'll be adding street trees and we're going to make the, the front landscape look like it, it's going to, it's going to really change the whole feel as you drive down Reef Road. So as you can see, it has a front balcony, there'll be a direct entrance that if the person that's living in that unit will be able to walk in. And then, as I said, to the north elevation, it will also, it won't give it the feeling of just a side, a side of a home. We felt it was very important to upgrade the appearance along Reef Road. This is very similar in nature, folks. If you can remember, we did a, there was a project done, well, I don't know, anybody was on the commission at that point. I represented a client, we built, that built townhomes, received similar variances and built the townhomes that are, that have been very successful directly behind Quattro Pazi. Basically in a similar design district, a district that required commercial on the first floor, residential on the second and third floors. They ended up putting home offices on the first floor. This building is, when I take you, I'll take you through the floor plans later, all designed to have two car parking garage on the first floor. Offices, you know, home offices down on the lower level and then Chris, you have a picture that you were going to show? Sorry. We're not sitting next to each other, I know, in the same state. So there, there's our, there's our elevation as you come down Reef Road. Very attractive building, very beach-like, very consistent with what, 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 what you're seeing in Fairfield. In fact, if you took each one of these apart, you probably, you could probably find them on nine separate lots going down Roland Road, going down Smith Street, going down Fox Street, as you see all the, all the development that's been come, that's been coming along and to the rear of the property. So this has a very nice neighborhood look, we're adding a lot of greenery, adding a lot of landscaping. So the, the units will be, Chris, why don't we go to the floor plans? So the units will have two car parking garage on the first floor, along with an office and an entrance, as you can see there. There'll be nine units, was like, once I said, we're going to be using the existing structure, which is great, not, no big, no demo, big demolition involved. No necessary, you know, mess or, or, you know, worried about it, imprisoning on any, any of the neighbors. And it's a solid structure, it just wasn't the most attractive structure. The whole building will be reskinned. On the first floor, you will see that there'll be a two car garage, Chris, do we have the first floor? You have the fir, you have the two car garage, as you see coming in from the north, you'll have two cars. And then you'll have an office area and a foyer and then people will go upstairs. The second and third floors, second floors will have a living room, dining room, open, an open floor plan with a guest, with a guest bedroom or a guest room that can be used. And then the second, third floor will have a master bedroom, a den and an additional bedroom. Units will be ranged probably from about 23 to 2,700 square feet. And we think there's a great demand for people who want to downsize, people want to be in the beach area. And, and we think this is, has, has been a very attractive use, the beach area has gotten, without, without bringing the density that you've seen in other projects throughout the town. So we've got, we've received our WPCA approval, the property will be served by city sewers and city water. The fire department has approved this, as you can go back to the site plan, you'll see there's adequate circulation for trucks, fire trucks to circle, circle the, completely encircle the property. And then what we've done is had a heavy landscape along the rear of the property to to shield the neighbors. And if you look, we have some pictures which I can take through you, it's very similar to the properties that sit behind us. Chris, if you can just bring out some pictures, we can take them through the neighborhood. I apologize, it got dark since I started, so. So as I said, this is our, the elevations of the building, so what it's going to look like. This is what the building looks like now, it's tired, needs help. And as you can see, none of that parking is, 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 is safe, none of it's conforming. And it's hard to find a blade of grass until you're about seven feet from the rear of the property. What's interesting, and we'll keep going through this, that's the lot next door. Supposed to be a project there that I think was a medical building that kind of fell by the wayside. And then the other building, which does not have the most attractive side, there's the telephone company building. And that's the office building directly to our, well, across the lot to our cell. This area of the Reef Road, Reef Road, as you can see, could use some upgrading architecturally and we feel we've accomplished that tremendously. That's the building to this, to the south that you just looked at, that had no windows on the side. Chris, you can keep going. Okay, there's, there, around the corner, there is also a apartment building that has a number of units, similar density, actually more dense than our property. And those are all, those, those units are all private unit, it's a rental, rental project that sits on the corner. As you can see, it has that colonial look, we believe ours is a more upgraded look. This is the side of the building. When we take you through the balance of the elevations, you'll see it's, it's, it's quite an upgrade. If you can see the size of the property behind us, if you look to the rear and we'll give you a better picture of that. Our height at 38 feet will be consistent with the height of the, the structures in the rear. Building was an awkward build, so what happens is it's on two separate levels. The first floors, you'll drive in and then it's a couple of steps up to where the actual floor elevations are going to be. The first, the buildings, the building's not, believe it or not, that's not, it's not a straight across building from front, front to back. So there's, there's the rear of the property, as you can see, that asphalt goes all the way to the neighbor's property. We will now, in our building will be 130 feet off the property line. Are the buildings that we're adding currently under your NDD regs, there's only a requirement that you be 10 feet away from a residential zone. So we feel this is an excellent transition. It's, it, it is a large building, but it's a large building that's well buffered in a large building that we believe architecturally is consistent with the buildings in the rear. In the neighborhood in the rear, yet gives it an offset of almost the, basically a, a full lot of, of 130 feet worth of depth before you get to our building. This is what the other building looks like out the rear. As you can see, this is going to be a considerable upgrade. And that's, that's the rear of our property. As I said, there are about 60 parking spaces, I don't think any of them conform to, to the current standards, the new ones will. Okay, and that's from the rear of the property. The, the new building will probably be by, the new building probably just past that, where that, where that car is. The red car. And also, you, one of the issues with the height, those, you will not see any mechanicals, all our mechanicals will be on the, will be above the third floor in an attic that, that will not be a finished attic. So as you see the mechanicals on the building now, that's like, believe it or not, an old water tower that sits up there, water cooler that sits up there. That, that's going to be the first things to go. That's next door, there's the buildings from the rear. A little bit taller than our building, that one hits about forty, over 40 feet. But you can see the architecture, the style is very much consistent with what we're proposing along Reef Road. That's Fox, the Petersons are in the greenhouse, Mr. Peterson, we sat in his backyard, we took some pictures, he was very happy to get the additional landscaping. And, and as I said, signed up, signed a petition in favor of the application. That takes you through the pictures, Chris, why don't we just take them, take the commission through the elevations? Once again, your, your front elevations, those are the side elevations, so the front, the north elevation, you'll see the garage doors. South elevation, you'll see some, have some nice decks and so you provide some outdoor space. There'll also be a, a rear yard area for, as I said, people to walk their dogs. People maybe set a picnic table up out there. And then, like I said, it's walking distance to the beach, walking distance to town, it's just a tremendous location. All right, Chris, let's give the rear and, and then you have your front and rear elevations. Attractive from both ends, so we didn't, we, our client, we felt very strongly about making the rear of the building look attractive also. So as people from the residential neighborhood, it'll look like basically one of their houses. Because the building's so long and narrow, you'll get the feeling that you have the front of the, front of the property facing you. It won't look like a rear of the building and there'll be no ugly water cooling towers sitting on the roof, all the mechanicals will be hidden. And that really takes you through our, our presentation. Laura Pooley had reviewed, and I, I guess I'm happy to say that this is her last, I, I think this might be her last review that's read before the commission. She sent a letter to Jim Went on March 22nd, said, Jim, I reviewed the proposed site plan for the new residential building of 321 Reef Road. And the hydrology report is prepared by Anthony Passari dated 222202. Hydraulics report demonstrates that stormwater intenuation has been provided for the new addition to this building. In addition, the water quality volume for the existing building footprint is captured and retained on site. The applicant has also reduced the area of impervious surface on this parcel, which also contributes to reduction stormwater runoff. Soil testing was conducted in the location of the proposed stormwater detention systems to validate the design as requested. The applicant has responded to all of my comments from code enforcement meeting held on February 1st, 2022. With regard to the request for the check valve, the applicant did include one detail sheet, D2, however, should also be called out in the proposed site plan, which we will agree to do. The plans I submitted are therefore acceptable as designed. Please let me know if you have any further questions regarding this proposal, Laura. So this is, this is an applicant, which I'm very happy to say is taking in all the, all the concern, taking into consideration all the concerns of all the departments. We've satisfied all the conditions of the apart, of the departments. We've said, we, we've made sure to reach out, as I said, I personally walk the neighborhood, talk to the neighbors. And we believe we've addressed their concerns. And I think we're taking a, what I call almost a derelict looking building that has been non-performing, non, non, non FEMA compliant, non-conforming and turning it into a, a conforming building that I think will be a, a great gateway down to the beach area. I'd be happy to answer any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a, once we, once we received our variances, which the, as I said, the four variances were for, to go a hundred percent residential, to exceed the, to, and also to allow residential on the first floor. To also exceed, if you, I don't know if you remember, the neighborhood design district, we've talked about this before under other applications. Coming out of the, the whole Stratfield, the market situation. I think the board years ago passed a limitation on neighborhood design district that said a building can't be bigger than 14,000 square feet in the neighborhood design district. I don't think it was specifically around 14,000 square feet, happens to be the size of most pharmacies or, you know, formerly of most pharmacies, they're getting smaller again. So we received a variance of that, the existing building was larger, this building is larger. But the building is, makes sense to have in one building rather than split it up into two or three buildings. Also given the unique, not the topography, but certainly the shape of the lot being a hundred by 400 feet. The other issue was extent was a, a variance of going from 30 to 38 feet. Which we believe was consistent because we can't have all full living space. To be FEMA compliant, we can't have a full living space on the first floor. We wanted to have garages, we didn't want, we wanted to get rid of that large parking lot feel. And, and that allowed us to have two levels of living space, additional living space on the second and third floor. And also add a tremendous amount of impervious by putting two car garages for each of the units. We have a total of 28 parking spaces, which we think is more than sufficient. And we think we, we believe we can, all, in every other respect, we comply with your zone development standards. One of the things that's interesting is when you look at what could be developed here. Maximum building lot, building lot coverage percentage is 75%. And although this building received a variance in size above 14,000, its lot coverage percentage is only 34.8, so less than half the size, left, less than half the size that it could be under your regulations. Additionally, what's important is the only setback, the setback issues, when you look at them, we're more than, we're more than adequately off the street. We have no issues with our side yards and more importantly, a, a budding residential neighborhood, there's a requirement that a rear, that there be a 10 foot setback, a 30 foot setback abutting a residential A zone, we're 133 feet. I think our client has spent the time, spent the money, designed a project that fits like a glove in here and will, and will totally upgrade this. I will call it certainly a transition area of Reef Road where we, we have this kind of non-conforming, non-performing, non-conforming, and I will say, non and underperforming commercial real estate. And I, I think this is, is an excellent gateway to the beach area. With regard to your conditions of approval, you need to see that the location type, character and size and use of the buildings shall be in harmony and conform to the appropriate orderly development in the town and not hinder or discourage appropriate development. I believe this satisfies all of those requirements, in fact, if anything, it will encourage development. And we like to think the right kind of development that this commission's been used to. We're not looking, look, we're basically, as I said, I was shocked when I had a client come in with an acre on, 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 on a good sized street in a mixed use zone and he wanted to do low density residential, like to commend my client for that. The nature and location of the use of the buildings or structures shall be such that there will be adequate fire access, access for fire protection. As you can see, fire, we met with the fire department, fire trucks can circulate the entire property. The streets serving the proposed use shall be adequate to carry prospective traffic. And provisions need to be made to avoid congestion, we have adequate parking off the street. We're actually, believe it or not, if this building were fully used as a medical facility, we're reducing the amount of traffic that will come out onto Reef Road by, by having these nine units. And all our landscaping exceeds the requirements of section 25.76. And we consider this in conformity with the master plan as a residential use is permitted in this zone and we think it's an excellent transit, transition use. We also had a coastal plan application as part of this application, it's not just a special exception, we're in a coastal zone. One of the things, I, we don't feel there's any negative impact to Long Island Sound, there's no negative impact on coastal resources. We met with the town engineer of taking care of all, all, all questions with regard to runoff and stormwater management. And we will make this building, which is currently not FEMA compliant, this building, we will be converted. And we will make this building, which is currently not FEMA compliant, this building, we, will be converted into a FEMA compliant structure. And that's all I have. I'm really happy to be here. I'm a, I'm a neighbor to the property. Uh, I think it's an excellent use, and as you can see, our client is looking to bring the, bring the highest quality use to this site. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
I saw Commissioner Braun earlier, Commissioner Braun, and then Commissioner Harrison. Um, do either your commissioners need the shared screen on?
Yeah, that'd be great if I could, yeah.
So Commissioner Braun, that's fine.
One of the um, one of the uh aerial schematics would, would be great to look at. So so Attorney Rizzio, so you're taking um the existing building and you're putting parking inside the building. You're able to convert the ground floor into parking gar, into garage.
Into garage, yes.
You're basically adding a floor on top of what it is now. Um, but it's still going to be under some of the neighboring um heights of, of the other neighboring buildings, I guess.
Correct. The building's cer, certainly in the rear.
Okay, and then you're taking the parking lot, which is huge. And because there's so much extra parking, you're able to reduce the impervious surface, add lawn and perhaps some native plantings. I didn't see your planting plan. Is there any?
There's a whole planting plan that's attached. There's a bunch of native plants. There's a bunch of trees. And also, what's important, Commissioner Braun, we're re-adding the street trees along Reef Road. Hopefully, as the other properties get transformed along Reef Road, which are south of us and hopefully maybe something north of us, that, 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 that this will, this will carry forward. You can see the planting plan down below and pictures of the trees and the, and the, and the bushes that'll be planted.
And the, the forested area behind the sort of vacant lot to the south is, that's not part of this, right? That's completely.
No, the four, the, our, our, our lot is, as I said, ninety-seven, ninety-six and a half percent asphalt directly to the south, and we, I've met with that neighbor, and we're not touching any of that, is, is, is a, is a denser, I, I don't know that I'd call it forest, but definitely a denser tree, a denser tree buffer between um, what is that vacant lot and the, and the neighbor.
Okay, and um so that, that's interesting. That, so um, and then, okay, so another question about utilities and HVAC and all that stuff. Can you, are, are the, the air conditioner units, that's going to be inside the building up in the attic, I guess?
Yeah, every, everything's got to be FEMA compliant. Nothing's going to be hanging out. That'll, that, that third floor is going to be used for the mechanicals versus what you now see those ugly uh cooling towers on top of a building.
The fourth floor, you mean? Well, parking is on the ground level, then you have two le, levels of living space.
And then the, the attic will be in the eaves, basically.
Okay, and um, is there a generator and where's the garbage disposal going to be? How's that handled?
You go back to the plan?
Just because it's kind of a tight squeeze, um, they sound like luxury apartments. Um, so I'm sure you've
Yep.
managed that, so there's.
Yeah, we haven't designated, but we do, we will put a, it'll, it'll be in the rear of the building. But, you know, to allow for the garbage trucks to come in, probably closer to that lawn area. We, any, any trash facility that we put, we would agree to have it enclosed, enclosed and uh not um and not uh vis, you know, not visible, the, the certainly being an enclosed structure.
I, I lo, I'm looking at an aerial. I don't see any sign of wetlands in the area, but did, did you talk to wet, conservation? Just confirm that there's no wetlands regulated area on the parcel?
Yes. I mean, we, 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 we had, our, our engineers did an analysis of the property. And uh, when we filed, it go through, and if wetlands, you know, you're, you're, there's not any wetland soils that were determined. Remember, the site is night. There might be, there's, there's only, there's a strip that's about, you know, five feet wide, and that's it. There's really, it, the, the whole site is impervious. There, that's if you look at that top picture.
So you're reducing that impervious surface. And um, um, a couple more. Are, are there, how many handicap spaces will there be of the twen, so the twenty-eight spaces includes two in each double garage for the nine units and then ten in the back?
Correct. And then there'll be two handicap spaces of, of, of those ten. As you can see, they're the two closest to the building.
Okay. I think that covers my questions for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Harrison, do you need the shared screen on?
No, I, I don't believe I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and, and thank you, Attorney Rizzio. I appreciate your presentation and appreciate the vision of, of the applicant that you're representing. It's a beautiful structure. I had a question. Now, I, I know that you're aware of this, uh, because you come to our commission a lot, that, you know, Fairfield has an issue with affordable housing. Now, why not have one unit designated as affordable? Can you provide just, you know, insights on why we can go that route here?
That's an unusual question from, from the commission. I've never asked anybody to have more affordable in it. Look, the, 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 the project, to make the project work at this high level, I, I will tell you, in this, it, what, what does, once you get above ten units, and you've seen it with other smaller project, Commissioner Harris, you might not have been on the commission, but um, first of all, we're not required to.
Right, I know that.
We only have to do that if we're ten units or more. And um, it, it, it's, I know another project, which I think had about six, which has two or two of them. And it, it, and it's been very difficult for the uh owner to deal with when you have such a small section of them, and, and there's such a disparity in pricing and in um and that's the practicality of it, and the fact of the matter is a client really wants to keep this all as a consistent style project with consistent values, consistent pricing. And if he wanted to get more densities, you can see, Commissioner Harris, we could add, we certainly had the ability to add much more density. Um, we're only, we're only using thirty-six percent or thirty-one, thirty-something percent of our building coverage versus seventy-five percent. He just thought this was an excellent transitional use. Um, the neighborhood thought it was when I talked to the neighbors. There was a fear in the, I can tell you in the rear of the neighborhood, a, a sense of relief that this was not going to be an eight thirty, eight dash thirty G jammed down their throat. That this was going to be somebody who worked with the neighbors, gave them their buffering, and kind of almost a, a si, myself, who lives around the corners, uh, uh, you know, a sense of relief.
Yeah, no, that, that's fair. Thank you. And another question, um, I actually, um, I spent a good day on Reef Road, good part of the day on Reef Road on Saturday doing an Earth Day cleanup. And I can't even tell you how many cans and beer cans I collected, beer bottles. You know, there are obviously influxes students down that way. Will this, will the applicant, are they planning to rent this to students or what is there, will there be a really good maintenance plan to make sure?
These are excited whether they'll be, so, you know, sold as condominiums or, or rented, but this is, this is, as you can see, for the level of finishes on the outside, the level of finishes will be consistent with the interior. He is, this is not, he's not looking to turn this into a, a high-end nine-unit dormitory. Um, this, you know, you, you, you see a similar project, I think this will be higher-end along um Old Field Road. Just to the west of um Reef Road. There's some white townhomes amongst the neighborhood there. Um, and that, there's no, I, I, to the best of my knowledge, those are being sold at over a million dollars, and they're not, and, and there's no student housing rentals in there, as, as far as I know. There's been, there's been a great demand for people downsizing, wanting to stay in town. Um, not necessarily giving up square footage, but to give up all the maintenance that comes with it. And we really haven't had sizable um you know, this type of a project. It seems like all our projects, that's the Old Field Road right around the corner. Seems like your projects, you're either getting really straightforward apartment projects, or what's now become very popular is, you know, uh, your, your high-end duplexes. Um, we think this is that, that perfect marriage of giving some space, giving some high quality in a great location without overbuilding it or impinging on the neighborhood. It's, as you can see, it's, it's very interesting that, you know, the neighbors that have talked about it have all supported this. You know, we, we did the groundwork um to get here tonight, so that hopefully this will be a short meeting for you.
We can only hope. Uh, um, one more question. So all the neighbors are in unanimous support of this? Is that what you're saying?
That I talked to in the rear were in support of it, and the neighbors that, or had no, but let me tell you, hundred percent were, no one had an objection to it. I walked, I walked the neighborhood myself, the three homes behind it. And then I also made myself available to all the homes across the street on Reef Road, and I think they have one or two signatures from people directly across the street. Chris, I think those have all been added to the record, if I'm correct, Mr. Went.
They have.
Thank you.
Okay, no, very good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Attorney Rizzio, did I, I didn't, I don't think I saw code enforcement minutes in the record, or Mr. Went, am I wrong in that?
What was that, Chairman? I couldn't hear. I'm sorry.
Are there, I didn't see the code enforcement minutes in the record. Um, that doesn't mean they're not there. It just means I didn't see them.
I, I know we went through code enforcement. Um, I don't think anybody had, we, we addressed all the issues, and then there's the, the recent letter from Laura with regard to uh
Oh, you see them. Commissioner Francis is holding them up as if they're in the record.
We do have, Mr. Chairman, there was a code meeting on February the first. Um, I believe the code minutes are included in the master tab that's linked to the agenda. I, I can't open that as I sit here, but if it, to the extent that it's not, I will make sure that those, I know, uh, Commissioner Francis has hard copy that. But it, I believe it's linked uh on our master.
Okay.
Linked in the agenda. If, to the extent that it's not, I'll make sure they're distributed.
Yeah, as long as they're part of the record, um, certainly the um uh Laura Pulley's comments are important. You referenced the fire sign-off, which is having the minutes, meeting minutes in the record are helpful. Um, as a record of what, uh, what they were and even for us to make sure that everything's been addressed. Commissioner Braun?
Um, I don't see a traffic report, and maybe one isn't required because the intensity of use is less, but is the access and egress the same more or less as what it was originally?
Yes, really, there's only, there's only one way to get in the building, get out of the building. Um, Chris, let's go back up to the site plan. And it's, it's circular in nature. So you'll enter on the, on the north side of the building. There is a loop around the building, so if you pull in, you'll pull into your garage. You'll back out. You cannot go out that way. It's one way. You're going to circle the building and come out on the, on, on the south end of the property. As you see, it's, it's very narrow there, but there's a, there's an easement, that's a dedicated easement that allows for access out the building between, it's recorded and it's noted on your map.
And fire has approved this as having adequate access?
Yep, we've been through that.
Okay, I can't find the code review, but I guess we'll, when, when we see that, that'll answer that question.
No issue with sightlines?
No, in fact, we're improving the sightlines because we're getting rid of all the parking that sits out in front of the building.
And as you said, the
Street trees were requested by the town, and we're, we're happy to provide them.
And as you said, the, you're not changing the entrances or the exits.
No, we're re, really, from, from the, in the fir, the first two-thirds of the building is a rescan. Just and, 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 and adding an additional floor.
That's fine.
And not expanding the, really expanding the footprint. Really, it's, it's, it's a great design, and, and I think a great use of a very, it, a very unique and difficult, what would be, it could be a difficult lot to develop. One of the reasons the ZBA, there's no way to put retail on a, in a building like this, you know? Even office really struggles.
Why, why is that?
Well, first of all, you have such limited street exposure.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the ax, the, the parking has got to be, there's no, there was really nowhere to park on the side, so everybody to park in the rear and then walk around to the front of the building. The bill, I don't, I don't ever remember that building, maybe since I've been in town, that that building's ever really been full. Um, so it, it, it's ju, it's just an awkward building because of the depth of the lot. So we're lucky that we managed to be able to add these three units to make this thing we think really viable, yet provide the buffer for the neighbors that they, that they haven't had for fifty years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Francis?
I commend the developer on the attractive look of the structure. It's, it's very gracious. I hope they decide to make it condos, but who knows? Um, where will the, um, the moving trucks be when that does occasionally occur? And the um Amazon delivery and the plumber repairing? Where will all these people park?
Will have to be in the rear. I mean, there's ten spaces there. Any delivery trucks that come during the day, we'll be able to go, we'll be able to go there. Um, uh, we don't envision those ten spot, envision pretty much everybody using their parking spots, and those, those ten spaces will pretty much be designated for visitors.
And is, is that where the Amazon packages get delivered? And the mail and all that in the back?
I, that, I mean, there's parking on the street. We, you know, you, you, you never know where the I would tell you, it'd be, it'd be, it'd be nice to have them park in the rear, but you got to remember, it, they're individual condos. There's not a central hallway. So packages will be left at each, at each of the doors.
Oh, oh, you're not going to have one of those lobby, okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's no center hallway here. They're individual townhomes.
If I could interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Antonio Galero, Phoenix.
Is that okay?
Can you hear me?
Attorney Rizzio, is he your?
He's my client.
He's your client? Okay, go ahead.
How are you?
Fine, we can hear you. Can you just say your name again for the record?
Antonio Galero, Phoenix at Reef Road Corp. I just wanted to address that because um, I just wanted to make sure you understand that there's twenty-some-odd feet on the left side, and there's also twenty feet on the right side. So just in case there was an Amazon delivery truck, there's an able room for cars to come by it. And then before, another board member had a couple of questions about garbage. The garbage cans are going to be in, in the garages. So there'll be individual garbage cans in each garage. So that'll be inside, not, not a central location. As far as the air conditioning units, we have a little alcove on the first floor, which will be at elevation twelve point one, which makes it FEMA compliant, where the air condition, air conditioning units will be. One thing about the power, and we're looking into doing solar panels on the whole south side of the building, so that we can try to get, capture the south energy and store for each individual unit owner. So that's something that we're in the process of doing. That's not something that um you guys are looking at, but it's just something that we thought would be, would be good for, for conservation as far as trying to capture the energy from the sun, since we're facing that way, and then give it to each individual unit owner. So there wouldn't be any needs for generators or anything like that.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, I, I like the idea of the rain garden and the sort of pervious pavers for the outdoor spots. That's fantastic. I have a question, but I might not have heard the whole presentation. How are people getting into their units? Only through the garage? Or is there an outside door in the front and the back? Where does that go?
There's nine separate doors.
By the garage or?
Are, are you able to see the, the screen?
I'm looking at the plan now, one of the plans, the one that has the red lines and the green.
So so there's nine units. Um, you'll find one front door on, on either side. So then you're left with seven units that have their own entrance door underneath the small portico.
On the garage side or the others, the garage side?
Garage side.
There's a main door next to the garage door.
And the two end units will be from the, basically one facing the, the rear and one facing the one facing the street.
So you have a man door?
Why don't you just bring us, just bring us back to the elevations?
Yeah, I see that.
So you can see the doors, you see the covered, the covered doorways?
So deliveries could potentially be made right there. There's no central entrance for the U, the UPS guy to go to, or the Amazon guy. They'll go to the individual.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Did you know what the rent's going to be on these? Like, what, what do you expect if they're going to be rented?
No, we, it's all, you know, the world is so fluid right now. Um, I, I don't, certainly, they're, they're going to be, you know, market rate and um consistent with it, with something of this quality, as you see in the marketplace.
Okay, thanks.
And he said they might make them condos.
We have the pot, that, we do, we, we are thinking about that possibility.
Oh, I think about it.
Would you be interested?
Oh, I think a lot of
Great.
Commissioner Harrison?
So there's no economic plan? Is that what I'm hearing? We don't know what the rent is? That seems kind of odd to me.
No, I didn't say that. I don't, I, we haven't set the rents. Um, you know, a lot of it's a function of costs and a function of market, and I can tell you, um, having been involved with a few projects personally, uh, the difference in the rents pre-COVID and post-COVID, um, i- i- it's hard to predict. I'm, I, they'll be
Well, we're focused on it now, so we know kind of where we are.
Well, I, 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 I can't give you a number. It's going to be consistent with what the market is for a twenty-five hundred square foot, you know, three-bedroom townhouse.
I'm using this, I'm using this.
And, and kind of all over the place. We're hoping they're going to be successful. You know, it's going to be ver, a very good, successful, strong rent, and you know, we'll know, we'll know more in particular where the market drives us in the next year. you know, we'll know, we'll know more in particular where the market drives us in the next year and a half with all the, all the apartments that are being built. However, one thing about our client, he's done, I think he set himself apart from a lot of the apartments that have come before you and the, and, and the massive buildings by, um, because I haven't seen much of this product being built in town, yet I think there's a strong demand for it.
Attorney Russo, can you take down the shared screen, please?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission have questions? Commissioner Francis?
Is there any option for elevator installation per unit if you do decide to make them condos?
Yes.
They all have units.
They all have elevators.
What'd you say, they're all having elevators?
Yes.
Wow, what?
All nine have elevators, they're on the plan. Uh, we can, we can look at the plan if you want, it's, um.
Nine elevators?
Yes.
Well, elevator for each, each townhome, yes.
The market is retiring people for condos. In town condos.
You know, it's kind of similar, if you come to the, at the bottom of exit nineteen, I think all of those units there had elevators. Um, on, on the right, if you're coming off going toward downtown, you get off that bottom exit nineteen, I forgot the name, it's Southport Commons or something like that. All those units were built many years ago, but they're larger townhomes with elevators.
Yeah, the, um.
You're on mute, Commissioner Francis.
Um, the, the only thing that Anchorage, for example, has that this doesn't is the, the gym, the amenity room, all that attractive stuff, but you can't really put that in without making it large.
Yeah, and you know, Commissioner Francis, interesting, being very familiar with both of the projects, there's, there's also people who don't necessarily want the community rooms. They like, they like having their privacy, they like pulling into, they like control of their own space. And I think, you know, that, that's kind of what, uh, our client's going after is that, you know, which, which, which I think there, there's strong demand for that. And the nice part, you can walk to the beach and you can walk to town from this location. So a lot of your amenities are at, right at your, right at the, right at your hand, within walking distance. YMCA's around the corner.
Any other members of the commission have questions?
Mr. Chair, we do have one person who indicated in the chat that they'd like to speak.
Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, our public comment portion. Um, I don't see, and I think it just went to you, Ms. Harrigan, which is fine.
Yep.
Um, so we, so that person will go first, but if any member of the public wishes to be heard on this item, please sign up in the chat room. Um, if you are calling in, we'll give you instructions on how to unmute yourself to identify yourself. Well, let's start with, uh, the individual who signed up.
Yep, that's Elizabeth Alta, Alta Belli.
Yes, thank you, uh, members of, uh, chairman and members of the commission, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Um, I'm going to be brief, um, I, I just want to give my, uh, complete support. I think this is a total beautification of the neighborhood. Um, something that, you know, it, it fits right in, especially downtown and in the beach area in Fairfield. Um, I know that, um, it would be very positive, I don't see any negative, uh, sign or significant impacts. Plus, we're gonna have more grocery, appropriate parking, um, it's only a positive. And I love that it's already existing, so it's, you know, only a, a bit more of a proposed build. So it keeps to that low density, as we all have said. And again, um, just complete support, I think we have a huge need for people who are looking for these uh, type of properties, uh, whether rent or for sale. So I just wanted to voice my support and, um, I know the craftsmanship will be, uh, very, very appealing and, uh, beautiful. So thank you so much for your time and the opportunity.
Thank you, and can you just say for, uh, record, um, yeah, your address, please?
Oh, my, uh, residential address, uh, it's, uh, one forty-six Oxford Road, Southport.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? Anybody who's calling in, I just see one or two, if you can please, is it star six, Ms. Harrigan?
Yep, there, somebody, uh, named Liz, Liz Di Trapano just requested to speak.
So she's up next, Ms., uh, Di Trapano, if you can just, uh, give us, give us your address, please, and, um, who is yours?
Yes, thank you, my name's Liz Di Trapano, I live at one ten Smith Street, which is behind this, this, um, property, um, next door to the Petersons, I, I really appreciate that we've spoken, um, a couple of months ago about the, with Mr. Rizzio about the trees lining the back of the property and the setback, which we really appreciate. I think one just piece of concern that we wanted to raise is what, um, was raised about just the rental versus ownership and whether this would become a Fairfield U rental, that's really my only concern. And I think honestly, there's probably no price that's going to price it out of the possibility of becoming a Fairfield U rental, given that they would put four students into a townhouse. Um, and it's probably equal to on campus at that point. So that would just be my only concern and just express a preference for it to be condos. Um, given that we, our backyard backs up to it, so other than that, I think it, it looks beautiful.
Thank you for your comments. Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? If you've called in again, star six to unmute yourself, if you could just identify yourself. Going once.
Uh, this is Arnold Peterson. I'm at ninety-two Smith Street, right behind the, the, uh, building.
And. Hi, Mr. Peterson, we can hear you, please, the floor is yours.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I like the, uh, the fact that there's more of a buffer between, uh, yeah, you know, from the parking lot to us, there's a buffer in there with trees and landscape in it. And it looks like a, a very positive project to me.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard on this item? Going once.
She's went to the chat thing and, and.
Going twice. I'll close the public comment portion of this application. Attorney Rizzio, anything to add?
Chairman, for, for, it's nice, I think for the first time, it's nice to not to have any rebuttal. Uh, so I, I really, I think I summed up, I think I, 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 I'm pretty sure I took you through the special exception um, conditions, I don't think you want to hear me repeat myself again. And I think we satisfy, we have no negative impact with regard to the coastal, no negative impact on any coastal resources. In fact, I think we're approving, uh, the, the, uh, structure of the site with regard to any kind of stormwater management and making the property FEMA compliant. For all those reasons, the fact that we satisfy your special exception, um, requirements, that we have no negative impact on any coastal resources or any neighboring properties, I would respectfully request this commission grant this application and I appreciate your time and patience.
Any final questions from the commission? Commissioner Cap?
Just really quickly, um, I love this proposal, um, hearing that you're putting in elevators. Uh, are you considering making any of them, uh, any of the units fully handicap accessible? Meaning bathrooms and such are accessible, it's just a thought as you were developing, because we do have a lack of accessible housing here in Fairfield.
I think only, uh, only what the code will require us to and maybe if, and if there's a specific user that has that, that requirement, that I, I think it's something we'd consider.
Any other member of the commission, final questions? Thank you, Attorney Rizzio.
Thank you, folks, have a nice, nice evening.
That is the last item on our hearing, so I will close that application and adjourn the meeting. I don't think there's anything else, so have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.